Good evening, everyone. If you'd join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. To flag the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just as a law. If you'd actually remain standing for a moment of silence for Assistant Fire Chief Bruce Egan, who passed away over the last few days. He served the town with honor and dignity for nearly two decades, and he is the father of our current fire chief, Chris Clark. Services will be tomorrow at Clifford Funeral Home for anyone who'd like to attend from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. So let's have a moment of silence for Bruce. Thank you. Well, good evening once again, everyone. Thanks for coming to the Town Run and Select Board meeting for January 7th of 2020, our first meeting of the new year. All five members here and many in the audience, so we're going to get to it. We have three different minutes to approve. We'll start with the December 10th minutes. President, myself, Mary, Sharon, and John.
Move we approve.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Sharon, for discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All abstain.
One abstention. Next, we'll go to the December 12th meeting of myself, Mary, and the full board.
Move to accept.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Sharon, second by Joe. All those in favor?
Aye.
There you are, Mary. And then one of December 23rd, it was the four of you and myself was absent.
Move to accept.
Second.
Sharon and then John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I will abstain from signing those. I've sent them to my left first, and they'll be coming down here in a moment for you. Questions from the floor, public comment, anyone who's not on the agenda who wishes to speak at this time? Okay?
Just a point of order for good, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Are we on the agenda? I didn't get a chance to look at it, or is this something we should do?
You're not on the agenda, although Mike Rowe had indicated that he was going to discuss it during his recreation time, which is, we're not that far off from that, Matt, so if you have a little time. Yep. Where's Mike Rowe?
Yeah.
Okay. So, let's see. We're going to actually jump down to new business. Andres, we're going to go to you, since you have a long ride home. If you'll come up to this table here. This is Andres, Andres Torizo from Watershed Consulting, our stormwater consultant. Andres, how are you? Happy New Year.
Great. How are you? Thank you.
Good. Thanks for making the trip.
Yeah, absolutely. Appreciate it.
What's there to discuss tonight, my friend?
So, I wanted to update the board on a kind of a number of different items related to stormwater, trying to keep the town in draft with all the various regulatory, um, different issues that are kind of occurring here with the MS4 permit.
Okay.
And I guess the first, maybe the first thing I just wanted to discuss, we, back in October, we provided a scope of services for fiscal year 2020, and there were a number of items on that. I assume the board received that, that letter. There were basically costs associated with four, I think, four different, yeah, four different, different items there. First item being kind of just like the general MS4 compliance item, and the second one being the stormwater ordinance that the town has.
Do we have those, Bill, here with us?
You don't have to sign those. Pardon me, I just stopped.
Okay.
But those would be asked.
Sorry, Andres, continue.
No problem. The third being the flow restoration plan, the Moonbrook Flow Restoration Plan, and then the fourth thing is just updating the board for meetings, assuming four meetings once per quarter, coming down and just updating the board. And so, I think, I was just hoping to kind of get some feedback from the board in terms of, you know, the, these different items here, and really just express to the board. I think some are kind of becoming a little time sensitive, and I just wanted to kind of update the board on, I guess, starting with the MS4. So there's, there's kind of two different items that we have specked out for the town under that.
Get it over to the board.
And first thing being the cost for development of a phosphorus control plan. So just to refresh, the phosphorus control plan is this plan that is required under the town's MS4 permit. So it's a, it's a plan to basically come up with a calculation of the existing amount of phosphorus generated from all the developed lands in the town, and then, once that existing target is developed, basically come up with a plan to say, okay, this is how we're going to bring it down from where it is currently. So this is like a multi-year plan, very similar to the flow restoration plan, which is already in place, we're already chipping away at it. This plan is due to the state one year from April 2020. And so, due April 2021, and this coming April of 2020, the MS4 permit is going to require some, some kind of an update to the state in terms of the progress on the plan. And so, just to give you a sense of what the other MS4 regulated communities are doing, we're currently working with St. Albans and Wunuski to develop that, or to develop their plan. We're about a quarter of the way through the development of the plan. So that's, it is kind of a comprehensive plan, and it's going to, it kind of rolls into some of the other things that the town is doing stormwater-wise, for example, the road erosion inventory stuff that Byron's been working on. You know, whenever there's erosion or anything on the roads, specific outfalls, we're going to recommend, you know, stone lining those, you know, where there's an issue, and basically that, that will be something that will be in the plan in terms of, like, you'll get credit for that. And so, it kind of rolls into some other, some other things that the town is doing.
So, can I just ask a question, Andres? Everything you're telling us tonight, is this stuff that you've communicated with Bill in terms of dates and deadlines and times?
I, yeah, I mean, to, to an extent, we have. We've talked about it.
Because Bill's certainly going to be our point guy on all these, in partnership with Byron, of course, but, you know.
Sure. And, and, you know, I just, I was just looking for kind of some direction from the board in terms of, of starting some of this work. You know, we're certainly, you know, able and willing to basically start working on this phosphorus control plan, but I haven't gotten any sense whether or not we're kind of approved to go with what's in this letter, or if the board is looking for, hey, this is a lot of money.
Well, would this be part of what we just budgeted for, you know, fiscal year '21, you know, starting in July, or is this, what you're talking about, have we already signed a contract with you for, for this year?
Yeah, I don't think, so this was provided in, I titled it fiscal year 2020 Scope of Services. This was provided in, back in October 2019, so.
So we were really talking July 1 of 2020?
Yeah.
Us having the money to fund this?
Right.
So.
So, but we do have some money in our budget to do, for the work that you're doing, and you're looking for direction tonight?
Right. Whether or not I should, whether or not we should, we should go ahead and start working on this plan. And, you know, if we, if we did, if we started working on it soon, I think we could basically have a chunk of this work done that we can then report to the state in October, in, sorry, April 2020, that we've, you know, gotten, gotten a ways there. So I, I would just say, I think, it's, I think the phosphorus control plan is definitely something kind of in the near term that, that is going to be a priority, and I wouldn't want to wait too, too, too much longer if you want to try to submit on time, a year and three months from now.
So it looks like, are you looking at this?
Oh, yeah. What page are you on?
I'm on page three, and it's a question for Kirsten, the stormwater entry, is that what we're talking? We budgeted 15,000, we've used 3,600, and so it looks like we have 11,000.
Correct.
Oh, okay. So, we have money to have you keep going.
Page three.
Certain part of it, okay. Kirsten, do we take anything else out of that item, or just Andres's work?
We do, because Andres is working.
I'm looking for it.
Page three, it's about two-thirds of the way down.
So, that, so is the board in agreement that we should have Andres start to work on this?
So, on this control plan, where are you looking to find that material that you've got to control?
For the phosphorus?
Yeah.
So, one of the, one of the ways to control it is through stabilizing erosion. So, through the road erosion assessment that Byron's working on, which I'm going to get into that next, but we can stabilize, add stone to the culvert outlets where, where there's erosion, we can actually get credit for that, that's one way. Other ways are street sweeping, and so, I would need to dig into exactly what the town's doing right now for street sweeping, and there's ways to make that more efficient that we can then get some credit for, that's another way to do it. A third way is to just do more of these traditional stormwater improvement projects, like we did up on Hitzel Terrace, and there's a couple other ones that are in this flow restoration plan that get us credit towards the flow, but they're also going to be beneficial for the phosphorus.
Can we get credits for both?
Yeah, you get credits for both. If it's designed appropriately, then you get credit for both. So, those are the, you know, those are the ways to.
Did that answer your question, John?
I'm all set, yeah.
Okay. Byron?
In regard to street sweeping, Andres?
Yeah.
We don't currently have a street sweeping program.
Yeah.
Is that more for municipalities that have curbs and that sort of thing? Where dirt is actually, you know, collected and that sort of thing? I have, you know, very minimal curbs.
Yeah.
But I do have.
We're like your sump, your catch basin.
But I do have quite a few catch basins that probably should be back and down.
Right.
That would also count?
Yeah, that would count. Yeah. Yeah, and that's what we would have to figure out, if there's a way to get on a program to keep all the sumps clean, which, yeah, we can get some credit that way.
So is the board in agreement to have Andres start to work towards this?
Yes, please. We've got the money in the budget.
All right.
Yeah. Okay. So that, so that's number, that's number one. I guess, the second, the second thing is just related to the stormwater ordinance, and I, I guess, I'll just reiterate, I don't know if any applications have come in, but if they do, I'm available as needed to help review those if the board wants me to, so that's fine. So that's kind of just like an as-needed, as-needed thing, so Bill can let me know if anything comes in that you guys want me to look at.
Okay.
And it was really helpful when you came down and spoke to the, the people who came to the meeting, so thank you for that.
Yeah, sure. And then, I think the third thing, just related to the project list, so going now to the flow restoration plan, we have the Moonbrook Flow Restoration Plan. There's two projects on that list which are kind of up next, so we, we're making good progress on it because we've, so just to give you the, the history again, the Moonbrook Flow Restoration Plan was submitted, it was approved by the state, and so that's all set, the plan is done, but there's an implementation table in that plan, we're supposed to be knocking off these projects year to year, and the ones, we've, we did Hitzel Terrace a few years ago, two years ago, that's done. So now, there is a project at Windmere and a project at Nancy Lane, and so, I think, I think probably out of both of those two, the Windmere project, which is basically just upgrading the, the existing stormwater pond that's there, that could be a very simple project, that could be, one that could be just good to knock off, I think that's the next one on the list. I have a budget in the year of $13,000 for that. That actually includes, that would actually also include the construction cost for that because it's a, all it is, is a modification to the outlet controls that are on that pond. So I think the next step with that, if, if we want to start pursuing that project, would be to, to make contact with the homeowners, we probably have a meeting, and sit down and just start making progress with them to kind of inform them about this, because right now, their permit has expired, and basically what needs to happen is that permit needs to be rolled into the town's MS4 permit, and we need to do this project, so then that kind of relieves them going forward. So I think that's kind of the next priority.
So I think, it sounds like a good plan, but we just have to be cognizant, once again, of the money, because, you know, we just heard that we have about 13,000 this fiscal year through July.
Right.
We just told you to start working on the phosphorus plant, so we'll just, you know, make sure the math doesn't deficit spend us this fiscal year.
Okay. Which, I mean, I think even if we were to start making some progress on that by just having a meeting and making contact, it could be something that could be kind of completed after the fiscal year.
The board in agreement?
Yeah. We did, we did put in a.
We can split it over fiscal years.
We did put in a, an injection into that stormwater line in the next general budget for additional projects, if you recall, because we, we did take your, you had sent us over a.
Yeah.
It was quite, if I remember, it was a lot more than what we traditionally budgeted for, and then we actually backed it down a little.
Yeah.
But, so, if the budgets pass in March, we'll have a little more money there to spend for additional work.
Yeah.
So, Barbara?
Because there's also clean water block grants available right now, even for MS4. So there's a 50% match for the town, and those are going on right now. There was one round that was for projects less than 20,000.
Yeah.
It just passed, but there's going to be another upcoming round for larger projects. But I think something like this could still be included.
Definitely, so.
That one's going to, there's three block grants, one goes through the Regional Planning Commissions, another one goes through the Conservation Districts, and the third one goes through some block shake groups.
Okay. That's good. We need to research that.
Yeah, thank you. And Andres was good before, finding some grants to do some of this work, so you'll keep an eye out for that as well.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, and thank you, Barbara.
So then, I, I think the, just the fourth thing here is the road erosion inventory, so that is something that Byron and the planning, I believe the planning commission.
We hired Susan.
Susan, yeah.
She was working through the Addison County.
Addison County, right. Okay, so, the, the road erosion inventory is something, there's been a lot of good work that these guys have already done. That is, that's actually due to be submitted to the state this coming April, and there is some more work to be done on that in order to get all that data packaged up the way the state wants it, and then get it uploaded to their database. There's, it's not as easy as one would think to do that, we've traded emails on other projects back and forth. So Byron, Byron and I were just talking about that, and so I think, what we were, what we were thinking is that we would get together and basically get a plan, and Byron would be able to do, do the fieldwork, kind of that, our direction, you could collect the data, and we would basically assist the town to get that uploaded to the, to the state's database, because that is something that's, that's due in April. So I recognize, again, the budget constraints, so I think just knowing that upper number, we could take that from the, you know, making, making sure we're not, you know, if we spend some time doing that, we could kind of hang on to the budget for the phosphorus control to push that a little bit further on.
Yeah. Okay.
Because that is something that is due in April.
Okay.
The board like what they're hearing?
Yeah, and I think between Byron and Andres and Bill, you know, keeping an eye on the budget, you've got about $11,000 to spend, so.
Yeah.
Don't, don't go over it.
Yeah.
And hopefully we'll have more next fiscal year.
So then, I think just the final thing is, is this three-acre rule, and I know Barbara, I've been talking to Barbara about it, so I just wanted to personally talk to you guys about this, just to communicate, because this is my, I'm kind of the lead on the project. And I wanted to just tell you a little bit about, I know, I think the board is under, do you know about the three-acre rule? About this new, this is all part of the same thing, but basically the state retroactively requiring permits for parcels that have three acres or more of impervious surface? And, and there's a number of them, I'm looking at the list of the town, looks like there's 15 or so in the town. The school happens to be one of them, there's just a number of other ones, the mall is one, Heritage Hill, the Meadows subdivision is another one. So, all these sites are going to be required to implement stormwater controls at some point in the next several years, and so, we have a contract with the state currently right now to basically meet with all towns all across the Lake Champlain Basin and run through the list of sites that are on the town, within the town, and if there are any on that list that the town could see potentially working with to kind of help them solve the problem, that may also solve a town problem along with it, we would basically, we have funding to basically do a 30% design, so like a partial design for one of these sites. So, I know originally the city was on the list, I don't think, we haven't had any good luck with the city, reaching out to the city. So, I suggested, you know, the town, just talking to the town about this, because there is no cost to the town. My, our fees are fully covered under our state contract, and there's really no, there's really no obligation to the, to the town, even if, even if, say, a project went ahead, the only, an example of this public-private partnership could, could be something as simple as the town stepping in to be a municipal sponsor on a grant, because a lot of these grants, you know, a private homeowner can't apply themselves, they need to either have a nonprofit or a municipal sponsor, and, you know, even just in, in that sense, having the town step in to, to, to help apply for the grant could be an example of a, of a partnership.
Well, I would think that we would want to, on behalf of our school, apply for that grant. I mean, that's, that's a, certainly in, in our best interest, and we have 40% of our school board is actually sitting to your left, so.
Right, and the school, I, I agree, I think the school would be a great site, the thing is that there's kind of another program that the state has that is also going to be focused at schools, and so, the school may actually get funding in the future through another program from the state. It's, it's kind of unclear at this point whether or not they're going to do that, but.
So participating in this program, it's been presented to this board twice, and both times the board has declined to participate.
Right, and, and I just wanted to at least communicate from my standpoint, like, that it's, there is no financial risk to the town at all, so.
Our concern is primarily with property owners and ramifications in the future, which nobody can describe with any certainty to us, which is why we're not willing to go forward.
Yeah. Right, I get, I mean, I, I get it, there's a lot of uncertainty with it, you know, and if, I, I was just, I wanted to at least, since I was here tonight, mention this program, because we're really active in this, kind of these meetings right now, and if there was any, you know, questions or anything else that could, that I could try to clear up, I'd be happy to do it, but.
Well, question, I mean, we're, we've been talking about this in the abstract, but if somebody came in with a project and wanted to partner with the town.
Yeah.
Could we say yes at a later date?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I think you certainly could, it's just that there wouldn't, right now, just where we are, we have the funding to basically do a design for free, the state's paying for it. And the whole idea is the state's looking for like, example models that they can demonstrate, hey, this is how it can work, like, hey, we can solve a town's problem, and we can also help this, you know, private development meet their permit requirements. So that's kind of like what they're looking for. So we're doing 10 designs, so it's, you know, I, I just thought I'd mention that, but it's not obviously, you're, you know.
Okay.
I know you guys have talked about it before, so.
Anything else for us, Andres?
I don't, I think that covers it.
We'll just stay in close contact with Billy and.
Sounds good.
We'll plug, plug away at our lists and.
Great.
Anything for Andres? All right, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Wait a minute.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Oh, Byron?
School board representatives here, has any of this been brought to the school board or?
This is the first time ever, I think.
First time.
The municipal board contacted me last summer, wanting to know who to talk to on this board, and gave a match name and, you know, I don't know where that happened, she had a pot of money that she needed to get through to.
I remember that, if that happened. No, I don't know.
So I didn't know if she had been contacted before, did she, if she went through the superintendent or?
Wish I had a pot of money that I needed to get.
I mean, that could be, but of course, we lost superintendent, have a new super, or in one superintendent, so that message may not have made it to the board.
All right. Thanks, Andres.
Thank you.
We're going to go to Bill Sweet, Town Minister of Assistant.
That's good. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Well, how are you?
Good.
All right. A few things for you, I guess we've been lost in that. So the updated meeting schedule on committee items, we do need a building committee meeting to discuss a few things, one of them's in the packet, it's talked about, but there's a few things that have come up that we need building committee to get, to get forward, if we can do that in the next few weeks would be helpful, but not much has been added or taken off the committee list, so thank you for your assistance.
Okay. Joey and I can schedule something for next week.
The 2020 perk cards and discount information came in, so everybody around Town Hall, yours and yours was included in our packets.
Great.
And, number three, I did outnumber it, but it was a personnel policy to sign off on for everybody, around here for the new year.
The sheet was not stapled, the one to sign was not stapled.
Number four is a regional public works mutual aid agreement, worked on by the Regional Planning Commission, and it's a fairly comprehensive document that Byron probably the best one to go talk, to talk about that, but that's for public works agencies to coordinate for the project.
Put it on the agenda, Bill, for two weeks for us to discuss.
For the highway meeting? Sorry?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's like a highway thing, isn't it? Is it primarily highway?
What did you want to call it?
Yeah? Okay.
Okay, we can send it to the highway committee then.
Yeah. That's fine. Number five is a request from Windmere Development, they were looking to have a street light added to the intersection at Killington Avenue. Their, Mike Abatell, their, their, the lead contractor, had come in to me, and I'd given him several different options, and this was the last option, so I, I don't know if they discussed the other ones, but they wanted to pass a request along to the board, asking for a street light to be installed.
Send this to the highway committee as well when they meet on the other thing.
Fine. We do lights now. We've also, we're doing water source.
Well, where do you want to send it to, Rick?
No.
Number six is basically their, their information from the state, and number seven, this was a summary from Regional Planning Commission for their work done over the year. Number eight is warnings for the beginning, it'll be next week.
That will be at Town Hall.
It'll be, it will be, well, bigger stocks.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not making any declarations or guarantees, but we're, we're off the clock, so. The electrical inspection for the office is scheduled for tomorrow, so that's a, that's a, the last big step before we can actually move back in. Something that had come up previously was the, which is number nine, the painting work in Hollywood, this is in fact a building committee meeting, but the, the painting that was done in the holding up, so he, he had asked his painter to give a price to us, and that's, that's what that is, but there's some other things we wanted to talk about as well, so the building committee, where that's going to be most appropriate, but we're looking at a couple of options for that.
Okay.
I think we'll have to go with that building now.
We had painted a few years ago by him.
That's the packet items. On your desk is, one is a request from Fire District Five, essentially ask, asking to establish a regular meeting day for Town Hall, and Paula Townsend was the one that sent the request, she was going to try to make it to the meeting tonight, or you all to talk to her directly, I suggest that would be the best course of action, since this represents a challenge, like, you know, you've got to have somebody that's going to be responsible all the time and scheduled all the time, so I'm, I'm not sure, she said she was going to try to make it tonight, but that's, that is a request from them to establish a regular meeting schedule at the office. You also have the recent calls from service for the police department, and the other one is the pricing, new pricing for certain one, that's to do for Larry, I've got Larry to discuss for, for the transfer station.
Okay.
A couple other things, Town Hall work is underway, we've got most of the layout, most of the contributions are there. Couple other things, town court is underway. We've got most of the layout, most of the contributions are there. The school, uh, but that's, that's coming. There's a couple of things, um, when the, uh, police department, fire department, and transportation, uh, reports, uh, contributions need to be in, uh, they're all aware of that, so they're working on it. And, uh, we need a dedication. I haven't talked about that yet.
Yeah, we have a, we have, I've heard of two names amongst board members, so we'll make, we'll, we'll get you that.
Okay. And, uh.
I'll get, I'll get you my letter by when?
Monday.
Okay.
What, you're delinquent too?
Apparently.
I wasn't going to say it, but, uh, but you know. In the folder on your desk there.
Yeah.
The application sent to the state for Ramory Road.
Yes.
They evidently didn't accept or pay attention to the authorization that was given, that allowed me to sign it, so they kicked it back. So they sent it, and Robert just said, if Josh consigned it tonight and passed it back, that'd be helpful, we can send it along, get it back.
Okay, this is the, for the permit, for the operating permit?
Yes.
Okay, I move we authorize, I move we authorize Josh, on behalf of the select board, to sign the operating permit application.
Second.
Motion by Mary, seconded by Sharon, for discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
There's two documents there, Josh, I forget what the title on the other one is, the operating permit was one of them, but I think it was the actual application page, or the, 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 the.
Isn't it all part of the, the?
There were two different things, the operating permit was one, and then there was, I forget the title of the other one, but it's all part of the same.
Okay.
It's all part of the same information.
I'm all over it. What else?
That's everything on my list.
Anything for Bill?
You're okay, it sounds like the, um, annual reports come together, okay?
Coming together, yeah.
Okay. It's not a be need me thing.
When?
Oh, you said something about, there's a deadline of what, January twenty-fourth?
That's the deadline to the printer, yeah, I can't have something on the twenty-fourth, because, yeah, it's got to be, like, the seventeenth is really what I need.
Okay.
Need things by, because, uh, that's the. Why don't we have the, we have the pre-town meeting on the twenty-first.
Right.
So the, the warning's got to go in there. The warning is needed to add in, but it's the other stuff I, I need to get in there. So if anybody else wants to put anything in, I've got most, most of the, um, requests and everything are all, are all there, a couple of other reports. But, uh, if anybody else needs anything to go in, it's, it's coming up, but getting there. When we get the office moved back in and, and the boardroom freed up, uh, since our next meeting will be at the school, it'll give you an opportunity to spread out in there and get it all laid out where it needs to be, so.
Well, are we still waiting on this electrical inspection?
It's scheduled for tomorrow.
Okay.
Yes, but the next meeting for us is going to be at the school, so.
Right.
We're not going to do that, we might have to do it until February.
All right, thank you, Bill.
Well.
Barbara, Town Planning Commission Chair.
I don't really have much. I was glad to hear that, uh.
You can say no meeting, no report, like, like Fred.
I'm glad to hear Andres is going to follow through, or help us through the permits, the stormwater. And, and it reminded me that we're still waiting for an interactive map from him, so that people can plug in, through our website, plug in their addresses and see if they're in, uh, either the buffer or the watershed.
Okay.
So that would, that would affect what they can do. So that's all.
Anything for Barb? Thanks for coming, Barb.
Okay, thank you.
Kirsten Hathaway, Town Clerk and Treasurer. Kirsten's last meeting is Town Clerk and Treasurer with us.
Hello.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
I don't know if you all have anything for me, but I did a lot to say something to the residents, if that's okay?
Floor is yours.
Okay. So this is a little speech, um, let's see if I can do this without blubbing it. As many of you already know, I will be stepping down as Rutland Town's Clerk and Treasurer on January seventeenth to take on the role of Director of Finance and Human Resources for the Rutland Housing Authority. This past three and a half years has provided its share of challenges, but also a great sense of fulfillment and pride in serving our town. I hope that whoever the residents elect to fill my position is able to continue the forward momentum and modernization that this office needs, so it can best provide for its residents. A plan has been set in place to help the office until the next Clerk and Treasurer is chosen. I would never want to leave the office vulnerable, because even though I am leaving this position, Rutland Town is my family's home, and you will definitely be seeing it around. I would like to thank everyone for your support of my time here, it has been a blessing, and I will miss it very much.
Thank you, Kirsten.
Thank you.
I want to thank you, you've done, um, a lot for, you've got the office upgrade well underway, it's too bad you're not.
I know, I know, I was in there this morning, I went, oh, we're not going to get to enjoy this.
The windows and the whole building, the lighting, um, the work you've done in the vault, the sorting of stuff, and all of your work on keeping us up to date on elections. We keep remembering that audit the Secretary of State did, and picked on Rutland Town as what, the first one to be audited, and we passed with flying colors, so.
My first ever election, too, it was a presidential election, that was a pretty much, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We wish you well, and best of luck with the new, new position, and we'll certainly see you around.
Oh, yeah. I'm not going anywhere.
Well, you're just up the street from me, so I'll keep an eye on you.
Okay, she'll keep me in line.
Anything, anything final for Kirsten?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director. So Mike, we. Either put both up or both down.
Yeah, that's good.
You can't come up here with one leg pulled up.
Anyway, I hope you all had a great holiday, and I hope you're enjoying. Basketball is, uh, well underway, uh, we're getting ready to start scheduling spring. So as far as rec, that's kind of where we're standing right now, it's basketball heavy. If you've got questions or concerns, you can let me know, I'll get the schedule over to Bill, wherever he is, so I'll be posted on the site, so people can go look there. I do have one thing to ask of you, I'll hand this out to you. Myself, Chief Dumas, Mr. Hathaway, and I've been talking for a while about creating a cold storage facility at Northwood, I think there's two there.
A cold storage?
Yes, so basically putting up a, um, building or a block to store a lot of our excess, um, equipment that we're accumulating, that we don't really have enough room for. So what you have is a plan in front of you, that Byron has graciously come up with, um, and the three of us working together and contributing our funds, um, on next year's budget to facilitate this designing construction, which would be, if you're at Northwood Park, it would be in between Byron's building and the rec building. So there's like a couple of big dirt piles on that parking, so it would take place right there. Uh, it would be enough cold storage for, um, stuff the police department might have, like the cart, the speed trap cart. I have many objects that are starting to accumulate in our barn that we just don't have. Play a card shuffle every time we want to use something, or a cold storage facility would be useful.
What's the total price?
The total price right now, we're under ten thousand dollars, so each group would be about three grand. We're planning to use, um, material that's on-site, uh, in the park, as far as some trees, uh, we have a local sawmill that will saw that to reduce our cost, and then we will assemble it as a crew. So we're just asking for your thoughts. There is a need, if Byron or Ed want to say anything, that would be great, too. If you have questions for them, it's something that we are starting to need to keep stuff out of the elements of cold storage, basically what it is, under lock and key.
You're going to need a permit for that, Byron?
Actually, uh, no, two, yeah. It's under three thousand square feet.
There's three committees, three departments involved. You can request it, you can.
No, I just am pissed that it didn't.
Which committee?
Recreation, animals, so. I would think we should be at least.
If you have questions, feel free.
I'll second, and I do have one question.
There's a motion, there's a motion on the floor to approve, and it was seconded by Mary, now for discussion.
Uh, the question is, can we, can the transfer station be used for any of this storage?
Well, a lot of the stuff that's at the transfer station would kind of move down into this cold storage, that's already currently there. So some of the trailers, some of the stuff that gets stored at the transfer station would be moved down into this facility, and then you could expand. Yeah, the cruiser, yeah, there's, the stuff that's there, we would move into this cold storage, that would be part of it, so that the transfer station could be developed more, per se, because the base would be used, open, exactly.
We could, um, there's also a suggestion by one of my colleagues here to send this to committee for a little more of a thorough review, so.
Of course.
Uh, recreation would be the one that would be most appropriate. So, would the, you be, uh, okay with that, if we sent it to committee?
You've got three different departments, Josh, highway, rec, and police, that covers all five of us. So how much more discussion than the five of us sitting down? If you want to have a special meeting just to discuss this, I'm for that, but to send it just to one committee doesn't make sense. We're all involved.
Highway department's glad to have, and rec department, and rec committee.
Well, as, as part of the rec department, I have no problem with it, but I do wish it had come to committee first, because.
Well, I guess.
It feels like we kind of got jumped over, and I'm, I'm not happy with that.
We weren't meant to jump over, we just kind of, we're putting our proposal to you, because it was the three of us, so it wasn't meant as a jump, it was presenting to you, and if you said no, then we're, okay.
It couldn't go directly to the committee, it'd have to come through this board, to the committee.
That, that was on, it was not jumping of, of anyone or anything.
Highway's got to meet, so we'll take a look at it, and highway, too, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's up to you, we, we just came up with a plan that we thought was beneficial and cost-effective, that we could work together on, and it would solve an issue that's starting to develop with us in storage.
We'll send it, we'll send it to the highway committee, since you guys have a multitude of things to talk about, and, uh, we'll make sure that all board members know the date and time, in case you all want to attend the meeting. Also, maybe a site visit to just go, have a better understanding for somewhere it's going to be located, and it sounds like we'll probably approve it, but, and we're not building, we're not building it right now anyway, so.
We were kind of for your guidance, so.
All right. Thank you, Mike. We have, I waited, while you were out in the hallway, I, I had the school board wait for you, because you and I talked earlier. So we have the chair of the school, Matt Branshod, and then, um, our board, board clerk still, board clerk Lynette Galapo here, and to discuss some possible land acquisition behind the school. So you had reached out to me earlier, and I wanted to certainly give you two folks the time that you deserve, so. Floor is yours.
Take the chair over here, or do we need the microphone?
Will the microphone catch them?
Go over there.
Some of mine, because the two of you have more of the information.
Well, good evening, everybody, my name's Matt Branshod, I'm Chair of the Rutland Town School Board, I saw you guys a couple of months ago. Uh, we came over here and let you know that the land, obviously, up at, is for sale of the school. The entire Grover development is for sale, and my opinion is the family is selling it as one piece, um, and that's the phase two that has not been developed. With phase two of the development comes, it's about nineteen point four-two acres, which is behind the school, it rubs up to the old Sandborne place, and then it butts some of the houses, or some of the land up on Grover. It's about nineteen point four-two acres. So I was approached by the Realtor, it's listed by Betsy Franzone, right now, you can find it on MLS, I let everybody know a few months ago, it's there, it's been there for over a hundred days. And I believe the entire parcel is for sale. And in this one case, he's looking at, uh, the nineteen point four could go to the school. So they reached out to us, we spoke about it with the school board, we came over to the town. The land, we think is important at least for the school, uh, behind the school, where our field ends, we have about, I don't know, maybe fifty feet of that, before we run into a boundary line in an old barbed wire fence that runs through there. Our, when we go and draw the lines for the field of Rutland Town School, the back line that's up against the wood line is right on the edge of the trees. So we're looking at doing some expansion of that, I think, this spring, and this came up about the same time. So the asking price, uh, for this property had been seventy-five thousand, that's what's listed on MLS. And to make a long story short now, we're discussing it in public, it's going to be public, it's going to come up here in the next few weeks, one way or the other. I went to them and said, there's no way I can really negotiate with you, can't go back and forth, please talk to the Grover family and let them know the town may be interested in it, whether the school or the town. And please have them come back for the best offer that they could offer to the town. They came back at thirty-five thousand dollars. So, and I think that's a very ideal, like, certainly for nineteen point four-two acres. I don't believe it's developable, uh, but at the same time, my opinion doesn't matter, uh, that would take an expert or somebody, there is, uh, you know, a bit of a wetland back there, swamp, I know we have a deer yard, we have power lines running through there, Green Mountain Power's got easements, there's a road coming through there, there was a mention from the Realtor of Rutland City Water Rights, I had someone look into some of these issues, uh, the easements are there. And, uh, but anyway, it's my opinion that this parcel of land, I don't believe has been available to the school since it was built around nineteen sixty-seven, nineteen sixty-eight. The previous owner, at least what I've heard, did not allow any access through there, which was kids being able to go up through either Glenn Dam or go up and access the Northwood Park. There was talk about getting a right of way, but that wasn't an option for us. And, um, due to changes and deaths, and now things have worked out, now everything's up for sale, and people and faces have changed. So my concern is, is that someone may end up purchasing this property, and I think it's a limited market for someone that may be looking for it, it's a reason that it's out there, but I'm not so sure that it's, no one wants to acquire it at all. I think it would be useful to us, uh, certainly on the school level, and the second reason I think would be useful to the town is to run a trail, uh, from behind the school and then enter the Northwood Park. In order to get there, we may have to cross one, two, or three properties, that's kind of unclear, I sent a title, searched Rover going in, looked to find any survey map that she could, um, anything that was in there, and we have at least found one map, but it, there's, there's some unclarity there. There's going to have to be a surveyor out there at some point, Green Mountain Power owns a little parcel on the edge of the Black Water Line that comes through there, and there's a roadway right beside it, but they had actually acquired a little triangular piece of property. There's Sandborne Place, which we discovered is not owned by Thario, it appears to be owned by the person at the end of Sandborne Place. So it looks like we may need a couple of property owners to get there. I sent out a letter, I copied, and I know it's used to the select board, uh, through Bill, and I sent it out to the three adjoining landowners that we could find, and took their address out of the tax records, sent the letter out to them. I know Mike heard from one, I heard from the other, and the third person, uh, which were the Warwick's, did not respond. The person that I spoke to said that he would be more interested in just the school purchasing it, both for protecting the land back there, making sure that the land's preserved, uh, but he had some reservations about a walking trail, who would come through there, and then questions were raised with Act Two-Fifty, in that when the original grant of Act Two-Fifty came in, there was one access to it on Post Road. I don't know whether that's correct or not, I have no idea what was done, I asked from people back in the day, and they didn't recall, I'm not sure what the permit says. So the, um, the board had directed me to go out to see what we could do about easements, to see if we could, at least for a path, uh, to figure out, you know, what we would be looking at. I sent out the three letters, I did some like work, I heard back from one person, Mr. Thario spoke with Mike, uh, and wasn't completely against the plan or necessarily for it. So I think there's just two distinct purposes here for this block, and one is for the walkway, I know that the highway commissioners, uh, or commissioners looking at, um, doing sidewalk from Rutland Town School up to Chisana, and the person down from there, I don't know how much that's going to cost, but I presume a lot. We've had our kids leaving the school only for select practices, and I don't want to make it sound like it's all the time, it's been soccer that I'm aware of, that people leave the school, run up Post Road, then onto Chisana, and currently, if I'm not mistaken, I believe in that drainwater's allowing people to cut through her backyard, um, but that's not for townwide use, I believe that's what's happening, and that's just for soccer, I'm not sure of anybody else that's going, and I don't think baseball is, but they use, baseball, you know, we're.
So what's your, Matt, what's your proposal to this board?
So the proposal at the end of the day is, um, I would like this school to buy the, I think we need it for the field expansion, if it's in the town name, I don't mean it's terrible, but someone would have to come down, probably Mike, ask for permission, can we come over this amount and do this space? We certainly need it for field expansion, and we would love to get rid of that barbed wire fence and start to clean up the back of the property there, uh, if anyone's taking a walk up there, you see what it's like. This came back to the board, we were looking at calling a vote last month, um, and Lynn said that she would like to see it come down to the town, she thought it would be more favorable, both of the voters, but also will benefit the town for the trail, and she wanted us to come down and present it to the board, to see how the select board felt like purchasing it. So I don't want to misspeak for you, but you were thinking.
That's, that's pretty much what I had said, I wasn't sure where you fell, I haven't talked to Byron in quite a while on trying to get a pathway up through, to get our students and, and residents off of. our students and residents off of Post Road. Mike, I personally, nothing to do with the school board, just feel that the property should be owned by the town. I have no problem with that. We've always gotten along. We've always worked well, and should the town purchase it and allow the school to show you the plans, what we want to do with it, it wouldn't be a cost to the town to take and remove the trees or anything else that would be a school project. But I just personally feel that property should be owned by the town.
So, last time this was presented to us, we agreed that it wouldn't be worth purchasing this land unless there could be easements acquired in order to build a path. And now you've spun out a little different, and you're saying you want it for field expansion and other items. I really don't think it's, the town should be in the business of buying land. We have plenty of land up in Northwood Park, and unless we can get the easements for the path, no one's going to buy that piece of property. It's wet, it's steep, and it's just not buildable, and it's not worth thirty-five thousand dollars. So, that would be my view of it.
Further thoughts from board members?
I think John has a point. If, if you don't have the easements, you can't extend that path. If you can get the easements, then we're looking at a different, then it's worth, it's worth everybody's.
But then we're still the only buyer of that piece of property. I've walked it. It's not, I don't think it's a marketable piece of property for anything other than a trade.
Well, I mean, we could, you could go back at him. If you can get the easements, you could always go back at a much lower price.
So, what's, the urgency here is the wanting to get it on the ballot, ask the voters, is that?
Well, it's coming up on the ballot, otherwise you have to wait a year, because there will be an purchase between now and then, and that, that's the first issue. And I think the second issue is someone coming, someone coming along and taking the property. Like I said, I think the market's limited, but I wouldn't say zero. And what I mean by that is, is that I think it's quite capable of being a great place to go out and ride four-wheelers and motorcycles. I think it's a great place to go bow hunt, and a hunter could pick it up. And so, I wouldn't say that it's completely.
Put a camp out there.
I wouldn't say it's.
Put a camp out there.
So, if we leave it out, if we miss this now chance to vote on, at least put it out for town-wide approval, and that land leaves, then there's not an option. We can't build more land behind the school. Our field expansion is now stuck up against an old barbed wire fence and does not move. And so, it, and it has changed, because we've had a chance to at least talk about it. The town's only basis would need it for the walking trail, but if that were to happen, I'm guessing it may save somewhere a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand on the sidewalks in the Austin, Rutland Town, the grave changes. I don't know what the projections are.
See, the other thing about that, I mean, there was a study six years ago that identified the path we've been pursuing up Post Road, Chisana, as the ideal path, because the path in back was not as safe. It just, but, you know, I'm just, I'm tossing it. We weren't doing that in isolation. We were following a study. I, you know, if the school wants to acquire the property, I have no problem with that. I'm failing to see why the town should be purchasing it instead of the school. That's all. I mean, I guess I disagree with, you know.
Which is fine, but, um, and I haven't had a chance to talk with Byron, I don't know why, but I just knew we were pursuing that path to get the residents in. And the main, I think, obstacle before was that family would not allow access on that property whatsoever. So, that just put that entire property, that just pretty much killed the path through there, whereas now it's up and available. So, I just wanted to hear both sides of it.
I would agree, because I was on that study as well, and that was kiboshed because of the fact that there wasn't ever a chance of purchasing that land or getting it right or anything.
Right.
But times have changed. There's also potentially, correctly, if we want, there's a, a chance to add that path onto Grover Drive. There is a strip, so that there can be a walking path from Grover Drive into the town, to the back of the school, and then we could incorporate the path around, and we could figure the easements and try to work that. So, there is potential there, whether you decide who to go where. From a rec standpoint, I would love it, because that was one of the paths, and it would get off Post Road, and then the kids are up there, and we have a, a trail networking system that could be linked into Grover, which is then linked into East Pittsburgh Road, and, and then we're talking, okay, we got some trails here that we can actually start to maneuver on, and then work on some easements.
I used to, I used to cross-country ski there. I, I was one of the few people that Mr. Grover would allow to come up through.
It's just, I mean, I think it's a great opportunity. It's between the two of you, obviously, to decide. I, I think there are a lot of benefits to it that didn't exist when we were doing this earlier, coming from a rec standpoint, and from a school standpoint, that I use that as my classroom and athletics and all that, that happened at school as well. So, that's why I'm here in that, in that regard, that it wasn't in existence before, and now it seems to be in play potentially.
Want to go to Kirsten quickly?
Can I just ask you a question? When we did the tree cutting at Northwood, there was about twenty-five thousand dollars that was given to the school for that. What was that earmarked for?
I don't believe it was earmarked for anything. My understanding is, is that the SU office took in the check, deposited it, and then it came in through the general fund. I'm not sure how it was applied, but it never got earmarked for any special funding. It just came in and rolled into the budget, which I believe is how the law reads, isn't it? It was almost treated like a surplus, I believe, and it just was extra money in there, and then it just rolled in there. And I believe it was calculated into this current year's budget, that money was included in there. So, it was not set aside for earmark, and I do not believe it's there, and it would count.
I think it's a great idea, but I think the school should own it, not, you know, my thing would be that the school would purchase it.
Either the town or the school should purchase this, because I, I would be concerned about somebody else buying it and having the issues with a neighbor that we would have, might have. I mean, an individual could buy twenty acres of land out there, put a hunting camp out there, and now you've got a whole different situation. I mean, you can't put a residence out there, but you could do something like that, and it's an opportunity. I just, whether the town owns it or the school owns it, that's just, to me, that's just a matter of semantics, or however you want to put it, because the same people are going to pay for this, regardless of who buys it. The voters of the town, and I think the voters should have, be, be weighing in on this and say, yes, we think this is a good idea. The other thing that might be of interest is, to JP's point, is the value of the land, because of its, I don't know what other access, how anybody else could get to it. It's kind of looked, if I remember that map, it's kind of a landlocked piece.
It's got an access on Grover.
It does have an access on Grover, so.
Right. Mr. Grover walked me through.
Okay.
His land, and it does come right straight through there.
Okay. So, so there is an access from there, but either way, maybe, maybe a counteroffer. They came down quite a bit, you know? Maybe we should offer.
But I think, I think the people of the town would see the greater importance of the school owning it.
Yeah, I was just, you know, my confusion was, it was kind of Highway, because we were talking about getting the kids off Post Road. It's Rec, because it would take it up to Northwood, and it's school, because it would expand our property. So, I wasn't really sure.
It sounds like we're going to kick the ball back to the school board to decide if you guys want to try to buy it or not, so.
I, I think it's.
You guys would be okay if it was on the ballot that way, and?
Absolutely, yeah.
Of change.
You guys certainly have the right to do that.
Oh, yeah.
We just wanted to make sure we came over here.
I think it would go through much quicker math. When parents look at, it's for the school, and it's expanding for the school.
Yep. I did want to bring up one point, because you left out one reason why you came over
here to the town, which was, we lose, the last number I saw was a couple of years ago, in that the money we send away to the state of Vermont, what we get back is not the same. My understanding is, a couple of years ago, we lost about five hundred and forty thousand. It used to be up to about a million we didn't get back. It's now down to about five forty, five eighty. It took, uh, put that into the school budget. We lose maybe eight percent. So, somewhere between seven and ten percent of the money that we send out to Montelier doesn't come back to us. So, if it's on the school side, that was one reason that Lynn thought the town should buy it, because you guys raise a dollar, you get to keep that dollar. The school raises a dollar, we get back ninety to ninety-three cents of that. The rest of the money goes out to four towns in Vermont, or less. Anyway, we know where the money goes. And so, anyway, so one of the issues was that we lose some money buying it on the school side. I applied that, I presumed, about forty thousand dollars, and it looks like that having the school purchase it instead of the town would probably cost us maybe a couple thousand dollars. That's not perfect. This is all rough numbers, but maybe we might lose a couple of three thousand dollars by the school purchasing it versus the town, versus the town. If this was a larger land purchase, I would absolutely say push it through the town to save us that money, but given the thirty-five that we're talking about, a couple thousand, I'm not being frivolous with it, but we're running up against the clock now.
Right.
My feeling is, this sits around for another three hundred and sixty-five days after this election, plus two more months, then Lynn may not be there next cycle.
All the reason to follow Joey's lead and make a counteroffer.
Yeah, make, you know, but I do think we should make attempt to purchase that.
And, and this is why I went to them and said, I, it's very difficult for a town or board, the school board, the Select Board, go negotiate with somebody. Where did I get the authority to go with them, to make an offer, give me, besides going to them and saying, can you please drop the price, what else can I do to negotiate?
Right.
It, it's a very difficult position, because you almost have to get authority from your governing body to go engage in that, and that's something, being an attorney, I've been rather mindful of, of not going out there and saying, well, let's do this, and try to structure a deal, because you don't have the authority to, and I didn't. So, I think it's a tough position for a board to negotiate with.
Have you ever had any problem negotiating?
Yeah. I mean, you could go negotiate with them on the understanding it requires voter approval for the number you give them.
Sure, right.
And, and, you know, I think they'll be pretty, just given these numbers you gave us, I think they're pretty interested in the town owning it. That, that's, that's what I took from that, that they would like to see us have it, or the school have it. And I think, to Sharon's point, if the school purchases it, you'll get a little more, you'll get a little extra credit for that, because it's going to be for the school. I, I really think that that would, we'll set better.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Byron Hathaway.
If I remember rightly, back in December meeting, I gave you a copy of the agreement with the town amendment.
Yep.
I didn't know what your feelings were on that.
That wasn't your answer, what, Byron?
This is in regards to.
To the order. Look. The tractor?
Yeah.
I'd move to approve.
Second motion to approve, second by Mary. For discussion. Almost a favor. Hi, any opposed?
This is going to be proposed to the amendment, so, I think, next week, I think they're, they're meeting, so we'll have to wait and see how they.
On that note, Byron, have you done any research on the tractor yet, or are you just waiting for it?
No, because it just depends on, you know, and that's what was included on this agreement, was our method.
Okay.
And Billy Allison and I will sit down, and we will, you know, if their, if their board approves this, we will be back to both boards with three different tractors and their pricing.
Okay. Perfect.
Discussion and approval, or whatever.
I would, well, do you want to move, or shall I?
We'll move to authorize, Byron, sign on behalf of the town.
I already did.
That's Josh.
You did.
You're authorizing me.
Yeah. Is that okay?
Sure.
Yeah.
Second.
Almost a favor.
All right.
All right?
Yep.
Is that it, Byron?
It can be, or.
No, I'm sorry. When you said, when you said.
I want to listen to some more stuff.
When you said, okay, it sounded like you were done.
Yeah, this is my, no. I had a meeting with FEMA today, and we are officially all signed off on last April's disaster. We have a check from FEMA for about.
That was McKinley Avenue?
Eighty-eight hundred dollars, yeah.
Yeah.
And a check from the state of Vermont for five hundred and sixty dollars for added costs.
Perfect.
Good.
We are the first town in the state to be completely signed off from that.
Thank you.
This has been quite a process, but we, we made it. Just as a winter operations, I don't think we're halfway through winter yet, but we're slightly, we're halfway through our salt consumption, so I'm hoping for an early spring in February.
Stupid storms.
I know.
The mutual aid agreement, I think you guys sent that to committee.
Yep.
Yes.
That is, is an agreement that just kind of sits there. If we need it, we can use it. You're under no obligation whatsoever to use it. If we do use it, and it's, and you use it during what would might become a disaster declaration, then we're, we're all set. We can recover those costs a hundred percent through FEMA, but we need to have something like that in the agreement. It's being vetted now. That was sent out to a, a legal firm in Rutland, please, so that was completely vetted by a legal firm, and it's been sent out to all the Select Boards in the, in the county, and it'd be interesting to see how that comes along. But I would encourage you to look at all and read it, and, and encourage you to, to adopt it in the future. There has been, and I don't know if you care or not, but there's been three lots on the Grace property in Pittsburgh, which is accessed off Blueberry Lane, which is our road in Rutland Town. A couple of former, a couple that had a house here in Rutland Town for many, many years, sold their house, they are living in Balzino, but they're going to build up there, and that construction has started. Toward March, or maybe even before March, depending on what weather, I will be doing a cross-section inventory on that road, and we'll be giving that to the builder, as well as they're setting, keeping that for ourselves. And then, after the spring, everything settles down. If they're running truck traffic up there, we don't post our roads. If they're running truck traffic and there's severe wheel running, then of course we need to go after somebody's insurance company that road, but I think that would be, one of the first steps would be to have an inventory of at least the cross-sections to improve our point of what they're, may or may not be for road. And that is it. And I have a little thing I'll bring up to the Highway Committee whenever.
Thank you, Byron.
So, we set a meeting before we leave tonight, maybe?
Great.
Thanks.
Chris Clark is absent. We have Mike Carlson, Larry Dell here. Larry, we're going to save your transfer station thing for new business.
So we had the annual meeting of the fire department last night. The election of officers for 2020 are as follows. Chris Clark is remaining our fire chief. Larry Delvinary, assistant chief in McKinley Avenue. Mike Carlson, assistant chief in Center Rutland. Jared Rowell is now captain McKinley Avenue. Matt Voight remains captain in Center Rutland. Chris Henderson was elected lieutenant for McKinley Avenue. Aaron Bates will remain lieutenant for Center Rutland. Paul Williams treasurer again. Larry Dell is now training officer as well. And Rich Sweet will remain the department clerk. So congratulations to all the officers. Thank you. What do you have tonight for us, gentlemen?
So just got a couple of stats from 2019 to give to the board. Membership wise, we're at 33 seniors right now, three juniors. We accepted six senior members last year. Out of that six, three made it past their six months and they're doing very well. Training wise, last year, we had two graduate from the level one class. In the current level one and level two, there's two people have applied and doing very well from what I understand. Total of 216 calls, which is up from 195 last year. And just an hour's stat, incident man-hours last year were 1,700. Training and other activities was 52, which is about 6,900 hours was given by the town fire department as members for stuff for the year. One more real interesting thing is out of that 33 senior members, 26 are level one certified or higher, which is almost 80%. And once these two are done, it'll give us up to 28 out of 33. So for around here, that's quite an accomplishment.
That's great.
Department to have that many members certified at a state level.
Will you explain to we who don't understand all that, what a level one is? What does that mean?
So basically, in the state of Vermont, there's level one, level two, fire officer one, fire officer two. This is different stages of training that the state offers. The minimum is level one. And that Dell is 287 hours, I think.
Altogether, those two people that are in that class are going to earn about 400 hours apiece.
Okay.
And to give you an idea as to how it's progressed and how complicated it was when I was certified level one, the course was 72 hours. I think when Joey was certified, it was what, 56?
Forty-five hour course. Was Byron and I took the 45 hour course? That was to be, what would be equivalent of a level one firefighter.
And now it's over 200 hours.
Right.
Mine was 185. And now what is it, Dell, for level one?
I'm going to have to state what his was.
Yeah, we've been 45.
180 something for firefighter two. Usually they go over that.
Yeah.
So it's a big commitment to do, and it makes sense this one and two offer. It never was until the last few years.
Yeah.
We earned money while we progressed to level two at the same time, with the same instructor, the same class. So they're doing really well.
The sad part of all that training is after you go through that level one 280 class, they do not teach you anything about pumps, right? There's no pump, if you want to be a pump operator or do whatever, that's an entirely, the level one is for interior firefighters. So if you want to be the guy running the truck, you've got to, it's another, what? I forgot how much the pump classes.
Pump course is almost 60 hours.
Almost 60.
Mary has a question.
And what does that mean, Dell? Because I don't understand, I'm sorry, I don't think the public does.
To get certified to run a pump.
And a pump meaning?
The engine.
Pump a fire truck?
Yeah.
They want, this is 60 hour course.
Okay.
Mary?
Call the pad award.
You're at 33 seniors and three juniors, and then you've got some coming in. What's ideal? What's optimum? Are you at the size you want to be? I'm asking you that.
So when I joined 20 years ago, it was almost 60, I think.
Yeah, we were.
So, I mean, I, you know, you can have 60 and 20 show up. That's not good either. Out of these 33, I would dare say we have 25.
Seventy-five, eighty.
Reliable all the time. So, I mean, we would like more, of course. And we're willing to take more. But if you have a roster of 33 and 25 show up all the time, that's pretty good odds.
So folks interested should come talk to you?
Yep. Wednesday, every Wednesday night, 7 o'clock, more than stations.
The cost of the training is borne by the town, the department, not by the individual. It's their time.
Well, it's all the necessary care.
Yeah, along with everything.
Good, thanks.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ed Dumas, town police chief. Quick executive session for personnel after with the chief.
Yes, please. So last time we had, we have calls for service, quite a few of them back in some checks, as you can see, for the different places that allow a person here.
What else you have for us, chief?
I have.
Anything for the chief?
You waiting for us for that executive session?
Yes, okay.
Yeah, we'll do it at the end.
So are little speed carts up this time of year or is it too small?
I think it's still up. Second cost? Second cost for case carriers.
JP.
And he's up on that, okay?
Wasn't working Saturday.
It's up at the school.
It wasn't working Saturday.
Battery maintenance issue with it.
Yeah.
Is it on your warranty still?
We're going to check.
Yeah.
Chief, thank you.
It sounds out it doesn't work.
John Paul Fieden, town health officer.
So I just wanted to say every once in a while, a really positive story comes along and when it involves a town official, I'm especially proud to tell you that on his day off, Josh, on December 10th, went to his normal place of employment. He wasn't working that day, but he was going to check in and he walked into one of his employees in cardiac arrest on the floor. Josh, who has been on the town fire department and learned CPR while he was on the town fire department, immediately started administering CPR and did so for the next six to eight minutes. He was thereafter relieved by two police officers and then rescued personnel, including the physician at the hospital, all attributed saving a man's life to Josh. So I just wanted the townspeople to know that when the call came, Josh stood up and he saved a man's life and a Rutland Town resident man's life at that. So shout out to you.
Well, thank you, John, for that. Certainly very nice. And I tell you, I attribute it all to my nine years of service on the Rutland Town Fire Department, because you're trained and you're trained and you're trained. And, you know, I can, I know many of us in the room are on the fire department and going to CPR certification is not exactly the night you all look forward to, but you go and you do it. And thank God that I remember it from my days of serving here in the town in that capacity. And, you know, when it happened, I just jumped in and then afterwards you decompress and you say, oh, my gosh, what did I just have to do? You never want to have to do it, especially to someone that you know and you're close with. But I can report, it was four weeks ago today, this happened, and I was at this individual's house last night after the fire department meeting we were at and visiting with him and he's, and he's doing well and he's, you know, full recovery. And so it's a, it's a true blessing, so.
And you spoke to a really critical issue. Our department, both police and fire, do a lot of training. And when you're up on your training, your mind does kick in and you go right to your training. And Josh, that was a wonderful thing you did.
Yes, it was.
Well, thank you for that recognition. That was very nice, so, yeah, thank you.
That's all I have.
Yeah, that was enough. Committee meeting updates this time, any to discuss?
So we had a transfer station committee meeting and it was brought to our attention that our prices have been lagging now for three or four years. So what we're proposing to have on your desk is a modest price increase. It doesn't bring us up on par with what some of the other places they're charging, but I like the idea of giving our residents a little break on the garbage. So it's self-explanatory there, but basically the cost for a bag is going to $3. That's what most people will see. Small household items, 10 bucks. Mattresses, stuff like that, 20 bucks. Just so everybody knows what's going to be charged for those, because as you know, we're now having to pay to get rid of our recycling. Recycling is no longer something we make any money at. So this helps offset those costs. That's all I have.
Need any action from us on this?
No, I think that they have, I don't think they need, well.
I think we have to approve the increase and this is for July 1st of '20.
I'd move to approve, yeah, as of July.
I'll second.
Motion on the floor, seconded by Mary. Dell, you're happy with this? I'm sorry, Mary.
Yeah, no, a question and that's electronics. Are they dealt with separately?
No, still not taking electronics. They take them up at Leeson Road.
Very good, thank you.
And Dell, the pricing makes sense after you and Bell crunch the numbers?
All three of them went through.
Good.
And we came up with that agreement there.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Any additional committee meeting updates? Update on project list, it's not in front of us, but town hall, you know, fingers crossed this week we should be done, so. We are going to go under new business to board a meeting with Mary Cohen and Tyler Richardson from the chamber and Reddick about the regional marketing initiative. Come on up. Thanks for your patience.
So thank you for having us here again. Going to give you just a little bit of information on our update. We don't have any videos this year. We have to get a little bit of approach. So we are now in year three of our regional marketing initiative. There's just a quick update, what happened in year one and two. We were really focused on building brand recognition. We did videos and they were housed on our website as well as some social media and audio venues like VPR. At the time, for the first two years, I started being assistant Rutland and all that Rutland community to you. That was kind of our tagline. Mondo Media Works, our marketing firm, last year decided to pull out of the contract. So we were faced with finding a new marketing firm for year three, which we did. We put out an RFP again and we had four contracts or four proposals and we chose Lift Marketing, which is a firm from Saratoga Springs. The principal owner is named Abby Andrews and she is a Castleton graduate and she also has a second home in Killington. She's been a great advocate for the region and really understands, I think, who we are.
I understand marketing the region. We agreed with that Killington connection. She's really, really gets the area.
So the other thing about Lift that we wanted to use was that we had put quite a bit of investment in creative assets and they agreed that they were all high quality and that they would use them. We had no need for year three to actually build new assets. You know, our videos were great, our website was strong. There was no reason, and we had a lot of raw footage and there was no reason to go out and create new at that time.
Which was incredibly cost effective and great. So we created assets.
So they came up with the plan to identify two personas. One is an outdoor enthusiast that are living in a mountain town out west and it's extremely expensive to live. There's, you know, it's unaffordable to buy a house for a lot of young people, but they love the outdoors and they want to be in the outdoors. And the second persona is the urban dweller, the person in New Jersey who's got to drive an hour to and from work, who's, you know, frustrated with traffic and congestion, et cetera.
And the development of these sort of marketing personas was really, a lot of it was based on the first two years of the initiative, looking at where we were getting a lot of traction from. We were getting a lot of traction from, you know, the low hanging fruit, which we thought was in our general region, in the New England area. But we were getting a lot of folks from out of ski towns out west who were looking to our area to move to because of the affordability of the region. So it's really that data base approach.
Right. Interestingly enough, the biggest draw is not from Austin. It is definitely more from New York, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, down the east coast. So the geographic targets were the northeast urban areas and then the mountain towns out west. And we specifically targeted what digital media can do. So we're not going to go through the results, but, you know, the website has seen an increase in activity. You know, there's all kinds of positive messages that have gone out. But what we're doing now, different than what we have done in the first two years, is now we're saying, okay, we're going to start capturing leads. It was a lot about how many impressions we had. The metrics were around, you know, how many people actually saw our messaging. Now we are actually measuring how many names and addresses can we get. We had a goal with Lift Marketing to try to get 5,000 new email addresses through our website and social media advertising, that thinking that there would be probably around 500 good leads and maybe 50 families would move here. So so far, the new campaign launched in September, September 9th, actually, and started with an enter to win contest. We invited people to come for Columbus Day weekend, a family to move trip. We had, I think, about 400 entries for that. I call those kind of cool leads. I mean, everybody wants to win a weekend, so I'd sign up for it. Through that, also exposure to our website and some who actually signed up for concierge service, which we can now do through our website. Again, that's a one-on-one. If they want to learn more about moving to our region, we will put them in contact with a person who will actually answer their questions. As of the first of December, you can see we had 1,762 new leads. 24 people actually signed up directly to get one-on-one interaction. The contest brought in a total of 658 after all is said and done. We also have a beautiful new guide to move into the Rutland region that you can get off of our website. I'm sorry to bring a copy tonight because it's really beautiful. And we have had 997 people. And I think those are pretty good leads. Those are people who have actually given us our email to download this guide about moving to Rutland. And then 83 then have come through other ways. You know, and again, we've said this in the past too, that we can't just do digital marketing and expect people to move here. We have to do other activities as well. That's where the red carpet concierge service fits into this, where we can connect people one-on-one. We also participate in the state of state program through the Vermont Department of Tourism, inviting people to come for the weekend and see how they can get information about staying for good, connecting them with potential employers. And so far, you know, we're now starting to count the families. And as you can see, since the fall of last year, we've had 21 families move here, 47 people actually, and 16 children. And I need to update that because I think, I know we're over like 52, 53 people at this point. So we're starting to find some new traction. And if anyone has any questions?
Mary does?
Chittenden County. Do you market in Chittenden County to pull people down here because housing is tight up there?
That's a great question. We've been talking about that.
Good.
We haven't specifically gone there yet, but even advice from others throughout the state, saying, oh, you should market to Chittenden County. And they're right. So it's not in our radar for this particular year, but when we start up again, this year will end in a halt. We'll start, we've already talked to Lift about that and how we can.
Because we're close enough.
Yeah. We're going to get all ready.
Other questions?
We are also asking again to report, we have to ask for a dollar a person in the town. We only need 60, 2,157. We're hoping that that report would continue.
That's a separate budget appropriation request. There were two, right?
Yes, there's one for Reddick and then there's one for the marketing initiative.
Okay.
Completely separate. Right, Tyler, completely.
Okay, very good. And they're in, right?
Mary, can you do the report and then I'll have it in a morning. Tyler, are you ready?
Yes, okay.
And thank you very much.
Thank you guys for coming. Good to see you.
Good job.
Any further new business for the board?
I have one.
Go ahead, Mary.
Yeah. I think our board should recognize our hometown hero, Judge William Cullen, who was elevated recently to be a justice on the Vermont Supreme Court. So I'm very proud that he is a Rutland Town resident, kids attended school here and his wife was a volunteer in Four Winds when I was. So congratulations to Justice Cullen.
Congratulations. Right? We could get Billy, should drop a nice letter on behalf of the board for us to sign and send congratulating him. Okay?
And our other attorney sitting at the end here managed to get his picture on TV when the honor was bestowed.
I was in the room too.
Any other business coming for the board before we adjourn? And we have a executive session for personnel with the chief and then, all right, all those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Not adjourned, but in two seconds.
No, going into executive.
Executive session.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Aye to that too.
Okay, good.